All right.
And you have Jasmine online.
Jasmine on the line.
I'm here.
This is the opening. Part of the first item that are in common.
We drove here today in a gas powered vehicle. We'll be over.
Um, in common.
And we do have one member of the public online, Erin, if you would like to raise your hand, I can promote you if you have anything you'd like to say. That's star nine.
I'm actually really excited about. Well, that's me. Thank you. On the need to forward that out, I'll be presenting the development of the presentation. The applicants for the project are both with Aspen and. Right here is representing the applicant. So we're recording presentation after. The process. We're doing the location and extent review to assess the performance of this project. We're seeing this coming from Aspen area. The applicant can continue to build the project. Notably, the turn two, chapter twelve. The project is in the town of areas that can use. I copied the location and extent. Okay, so. First, I want to orient you where we are. Project area includes more open space and red. In turn, it lands all the properties and wells. The John will cover the alignment, but in short, the trail is located to the north and west of the Moon City Road alignment. Within a press home review of the. The road segment will connect the roundabout and Aspen Chapel to the. All the way to the Aspen Recreation Center parcel. So note that the trail project is going to the Arc Portal, but that property is located in the school of Aspen, but that's not. Next, I wanted to include this so you could see some of the existing trail alignment. They're not easier to read, but right now it's going to come out there. Connection. The trail connection just being around about in our property. And John is. Uh, so what? We're looking at the ABA compliance based multi-use trail that will be year round and. That has a lot of people about. For the great tip of separation, horizontal separation. And I'll let him. Did a couple of different things to the website. And thank you. Yeah, okay. So this is sort of standing at the Aspen Chapel and at the bridge. That connects the fifth night over there and then so the last picture. And this is the one from the gray. On the foreground on the left is a property and then. Both an overview of the staff analysis of four major projects of Aspen area. That we have found this project. And the project is only diverse. Um, so I copied language from the plan here. I won't read it here, but. But I know it's today it was. Didn't tell us how this project is. So in terms of managing itself, the genesis of this project is to accommodate the empty bicycle separate community world as a result of the popularity of the moving dollars in the area. And for foresting, it's a major step of when the rabbits and dogs. So given the condition and ongoing changes, moving dollars in this area, this project provides limited trail segments that support the Aspen area. In terms of practice. The project seems a clear and logical connection between the upward hours of the. Within the existing trail connection without. Two, that connects up to the Aspen Air Force Museum Center and also down to Aspen.
My staff, you for one, I'm sorry. Fred or Erin, is that better? Okay, we're still having some audio problems, sorry.
I can put the out closer to me if that will help. Because I'm.
Okay, any better?
Jasmine noticed.
Yes, okay, we'll keep going. Okay, Erin did too. Thank you.
You're checking comments in Fred.
Yes.
I don't have it up on my screen, so.
Yeah, so Erin said it was better, so hopefully if we just speak clearly, she'll be able to hear better.
Okay, is there some wiggle room to put it a little?
Oh, yes.
To me, okay. Fans, the project alignment connects to a bus stop at the eighty-two roundabout and also the Arc property. Bike share locations are found at eighty-two, the eighty-two roundabout, Arc, Highland Ski Area, and the campus. And this project will extend the commuter trail route. Next major topic of compliance is transportation user groups and transportation demand management. The alignment of the project is not only useful for climbing Maroon Creek Road to view the scenic area, but it also connects immediate destinations like the bus stops, Aspen Chapel, schools, rec center. And it provides a logical connection between Highland Trail and the Business Center in downtown. It's a little repetitive. And then, because it's so compliant, and then in terms of parks, recreation, open space, and trails. Pulled a lot of language out from this section, but just a few bullet points about compliance. The trail easements and or license agreements will be established to support the project. The city-county project is a great example of intergovernmental collaboration. The trail will be plowed in the winter by the city of Aspen and thus accessible year-round. And it's designed to be safe, effective, and separated from vehicular traffic. Finally, just summary of the referral comments that we received. The zoning officer was able to confirm that the Board of Adjustment variance is not required for public entities holding an easement. Otherwise, the change in grade would require a variance from the Board of. That the proposed wall heights could increase slightly to reduce site disturbance on the backside of the walls. And then the city of Aspen engineer provided comments addressing details that would be required for the permit drawings. So, in conclusion, staff recommends the Planning and Zoning Commission find the location and extent review for the Picking County and City of Aspen Maroon Creek Multi-Use Trail Project to be in conformance with objectives of the Aspen Area Community Plan subject to the draft resolution. So now I would. I would like to pass to John because John's presentation will cover a lot of detail about the the trail alignment and public process and the project genesis and construction timing, which I imagine is on all of your minds. However, if you do have questions about this presentation, I'm happy to get to them now.
John, I.
Yeah, okay, let me stop with my screen. And.
If I could share mine. We're getting there. Okay. So my name is John Spees. I'm the Open Space and Natural Resource Manager for the City of Aspen. Behind me, we have Jesse Young, who's a partner on the project as part of Picking County Open Space and Trails. And I serve as the project manager for the Maroon Creek Multi-Use Trail. So, oops, didn't work. What happened there? Oh, there it is. Okay, little delay. So, here's an aerial shot that actually came out of a survey back in two thousand and twenty-one, I believe. I just think it's a nice overshot of the area that we're talking about tonight and some of the connections that we're trying to make down here. See if my cursor shows up. So here is the Kissin Ride at the Highway eighty-two Roundabout. And the ultimate termination of the trail is up beyond the arc at where the Highlands Trail begins. As Nicole mentioned, this is just under a mile's worth of new trail construction. And I think that this photo really shows what kind of connection this would be from a busy hub at the roundabout up to a great community asset at the arc and all the spaces in between. Little delay. So wanted to talk a little bit about why we're, why we're thinking about this project now. This is a heat map out of Strava. And to get you oriented, here we have the downtown core. Over here, we've got the roundabout. And then up here, we've got the arc. And what I think is really important to note here is white is, shows high intensity use. And so if you're looking at this map and you're following the use that's happening on the Maroon Creek Corridor, and this is strictly bikes, according to Strava, you can see that there is a lot of use that's happening in this corridor. And as a reference, this is probably capturing maybe thirty percent of the use on the trail. The Strava is a, you know, a program that you need to sign up for and then you need to record. And so, yes, we're seeing a lot of use, but it's probably exponentially more than this. So that's one component of why we're, why we're pursuing this trail. Another component comes down to the current route, which traverses the school campus. And I think in, in years past, the use that we saw through the campus was fairly limited. You know, if you wanted to ride your bike up to the Maroon Bells, this was a serious physical endeavor. And I think just with the rapid adoption of e-bikes, what we're seeing is this is becoming a bucket list item for, for people who are visiting Aspen, for locals who are here. And as it currently stands, access to the Maroon Bells is a little bit confusing, to put it lightly, probably. Our trail system really delivers people to this location right here, which is the corner of the campus. And, and, and it, and it sort of terminates right in this area by the arc. The, the current agreement that we have with the, with the school district is a, is an MOU, and that allows public access across, across the campus, and we're very grateful for that. But we recognize that with the increased numbers, as well as the velocity and mass that people are traveling with through the campus now, it potentially sets up a very dangerous situation to have people that maybe are a little confused about where they're going and the speed that they're traveling and, you know, conflicting with students who are on the campus. And so, you know, two points, one, we're seeing a much higher use in this area. And number two, the, the current configuration is difficult to navigate and it goes right through the school campus. And there's some security concerns related to that. So, goal-wise, we, there are many things that we're trying to achieve here, but I think breaks down to four things. One, we'd like to provide a safe, snow-free, multimodal connection between Highway eighty-two and the Highlands Trail. Number two, we want to balance that trail user experience with open space preservation, view preservation along this corridor. We want to connect the existing trail network and anticipate future trail connections. So placing this trail in a location that's, that's going to provide those connections, but could anticipate future ones. And then plan for use, changing user demographics. And I think we can all know what I'm talking about here. E-bikes and their use is rapidly changing on the trails. And a lot of our existing trail system, quite frankly, has difficulty handling the speeds that, that, that some of these folks are traveling at. And so, part of the trail design and trail goals here is, is how do we design a trail that can, that can successfully, you know, take in a large amount of users that are traveling at, at, at higher speeds. So Nicole addressed this a little bit, but I like this map because I think there are some difficulties understanding where the county and the city lie, particularly in this area. So my cursor right there is on the more open space. Important to note here that the right-of-way is a city right-of-way all the way up to the arc where it transitions, or I'm sorry, past the arc where it transitions back to the county. And then the other important note here is this line right there is sort of the edge of the arc campus. And so there's, there's a lot of boundaries that are happening in this location. And, and the reason I'm in front of you today is a good portion of the trail is on the more open space, a county property, as well as the pyramid parcel.
All around that topic, I have a question. My most sense, there's no record that exists for the pyramid property and that it's not publicly owned, it's not city or county owned, privately held. So, and I know it's kind of a weird property with just one house in there. How does the exemption from, like, section twelve apply to pyramid property? That's city, county land, and then private land. So does this exemption apply to that land?
It does. And staff specifically asked me that question as they were preparing this application. Because the project proponent is both the city and the county. The, at least an exemption from the chapter twelve state or areas and activities of state concern that there's a specific exemption for county-owned property for that. As far as the location and extent review process, because it is a project which has a public entity proponent, they are entitled to go through that location and extent review. Even for a portion of the property that's on private property. A good example, well, I was going to say this one period, but we didn't do one for that.
So you need the answer because you already answered. Someone else did.
It's a very good question.
Thanks. Sorry to catch up, but I'm curious. I was going to ask it later.
Nope, totally fine. So, this is a zoomed-in look at, at where the trail, where the intended project area is. Up here on the upper right-hand corner, we've got the Aspen Chapel and the connection that will be ultimately to the Kissin Ride here. Another thing that's important to note here is we, in order to manage the project, we broke it into segments. And, and the segments largely lie across property boundaries. So you'll hear me talking about segment one today. And, and you'll see exactly what that is, but I just, just for reference, segment one, segment two is the pyramid. LLC property, and then segment three and four are actually both on the Aspen Recreation Center parcel. So let's dive in and look a little bit at the design. So segment one is what I want to cover first. This is the more open space. I have a few sections here. Actually, the drawings that were provided as part of the submission have probably even a higher level of detail. But I wanted to just pick out a couple pieces and just talk about what the character is of the trail. So at this location where the Chapel Bridge is, we actually anticipate two places where we're capturing riders. One, which is shown in the section above, will go underneath the existing Chapel Bridge. And what's not shown here is a connection from the Chapel Bridge level. And those two will merge as you move up Maroon Creek Road. This is probably our tightest spot on the trail. And so you're seeing that the trail is directly adjacent to the roadway, which is, which is not ideal, but I think one of the, one of the things, one of the benefits that's come out of the design is that we do have a vertical separation in this location. It's not a long segment, but just that vertical separation, I think, will provide some comfort for, for trail users as well as those in vehicles. As you move up the trail, we'll go to approximately this location. So we're still not, not, not at High School Drive, but we're getting close. Here in this location, we have both vertical and horizontal separation from the road. In general, what we were seeking is a minimum of fifteen feet away from the road. And in some cases, that's a little bit larger. And in some cases, actually, it doesn't get below that. In this location, it's about twenty feet from the road. Important to show here, there are certain requirements that we have, including some sections of handrail or pedestrian rail as, as a fall protection. We tried to minimize that, both from a user experience and a cost perspective, as well as the ability for wildlife to move across the trail. We didn't want to, we didn't want to establish something that became a, a large wildlife barrier. On the uphill side, you can see that we are proposing some retaining. Once again, we don't want to have a whole bunch of retaining for a variety of reasons, but there are locations where we're trying to manage that cut fill of moving into that hillside. And then finally, the last section that's sort of right on the boundary of the more open space and the private property is here at the corner of Maroon Creek Road. If you've driven this road enough, you've seen vehicles that have gone right off the edge here. And our, our goal will be to, we, we're obviously going to have a protection zone here that is guardrail protected. And, and ideally in this location, you know, we're trying to minimize where you're close to the road, but also providing adequate protection. You know, most of those accidents happen in the winter, but this is a year-round trail. So we do want to provide adequate protection there. Let's move on to segment two. Segment two is on the Pyramid Ranch LLC. Speak for a moment about the way we've worked with this, with this ownership group. We've explored a variety of options with them. And ultimately, we've landed on a trail license agreement. And that is in process right now. It'll be a joint license agreement held by the county and the city. It went through city council two weeks ago, I believe, and it is headed to the BOCC tomorrow for its first reading. That license agreement is a five-year license agreement, and it allows for the construction of the trail on the property. The exact survey of, of how that license, that the area of that license agreement will actually be determined post-construction. So in our exploration with them, we've, we've staked a center line and they understand the general extents. What is a little bit unknown is, you know, the exact amount of grading that will need to be done. And so our agreement says that post-trail construction, we will establish the boundary of that license agreement. So, this is a, this was a challenging part of the road, mainly because the right-of-way, the way that the road was, was built, it's actually pushed right against the right-of-way boundary. So here's the school district side, and you can see we have a lot of room to work with on this side, but very little room to work on the other side. And that's why we entered into the license agreement. In general, we're trying to stay close to the road. That was what we agreed to with ownership. However, we're also trying to balance an ADA accessible path and probably beyond my ability to explain this, but the reason the trail swings out in this location is in order to gain some grade early in the climb up along this piece of parcel. And so that's where we have our, our largest move into the property. That blue line that you're seeing right there. Um, that blue line that you're seeing right there is a thirty foot offset from the existing right road right of way. And we're trying to capture all of our work within that thirty feet uh from the road. As you move up and you're getting close to the Arc Service Drive, you can see that the, that the trail actually begins to um move back into the right of way or straddle the right of way um in this location. In general, um, we have a variety of trail conditions here. Um, but in general, we will have some sort of retaining along a, a good portion of the trail. Particularly from where my cursor, cursor is right here, where it says begin wall and then end wall here. A question that usually comes up that I might as well talk about right now is, did you explore options on the Aspen School District side of the road? Um, and and the answer is yes. Um, the design team went through a full process of examining and alignment. That's uh that was on the school district side. And it was problematic for a few reasons. Um, one that's probably the easiest to to point out right now is the location of the edge of the um, the field and the track. We had really limited space to work in this area. Um, so that was one pinch point. And I think the second most important point is we, this didn't achieve the goal of of getting the trail off of the school campus. And so, yes, it would be sort of at the edge of the school campus, but it would still be, you know, adjacent to um, the school campus, particularly playgrounds, et cetera, in this location. So um, i- it was explored. Um, there are a few other reasons that we, that, that we, we chose to stay on the other side, but I think those two are the most important. We're gonna get, uh, I, this is sort of beyond the, the Picken County boundary. We're transitioning into a, a parcel um that is si- part of the city. But I just wanted to, to tell the rest of the story while I'm here. Um, because I think this is a very interesting and has been a, a, a nice design challenge for us. So I'll speak really quickly to what's happening in this zone. Um, the trail does continue, crosses the Arc Service Drive. Um, ultimately, it'll go underneath the campus bridge. And it will stay sort of road adjacent, going behind the existing bus stop. And then we'll travel through um this air, this uh what's currently that planted area that exists between the road and the uh parking area. We can skip those. There's a couple of sections related to it. Let's talk quickly about our timeline. So we've been pushing uh really hard um with the help of, of the county to um get this project going. For all the reasons that we talked about at the beginning, um, we, we wanted desperately to have a trail in place as soon as possible to to move traffic off of the campus. Um, and to provide a great user experience for people traveling up to the bells. Um, ultimately, what we've decided to do is pursue what we call a CMGC contract. And what that means is that we're bringing a contractor on board early in the process. So um, they'll be joining our team um hopefully next week um when we bring their contract through council. Um, and what that does for us is that it, it allows us to start securing materials, is securing a workforce um for implementation of the project. We originally put this project out to bid um right around the first of January. And um, there were no contractors that were able to do the project this summer. Um, and so uh, much to our dismay, because we were anticipating we were gonna get this construction season. Um, the, all the feedback we got was that it's, that's just not how business is being done anymore. They're, they're really securing projects that are two to three years out right now, and especially a project of this scale. So the good news is, we have a great uh contractor that we're gonna bring on board. Um, we're, we're proceeding with our, you know, design development and eventually we'll have um construction documents um by the first of June. And through that process, we'll ultimately get a guaranteed maximum price from the contractor. And construction is anticipated to begin in two thousand twenty four when the snow's off the ground. Now, informally, we've talked with the contractor and they're excited to potentially do parts of the project this summer if possible. What the good news is for us is even if they don't get to um the construction this year, they can start working on securing materials. Um, and and you know, re- really scheduling this out so that we can hit the ground running whenever the, the season opens um in two thousand twenty four. And that's it. Happy to entertain questions.
Same questions from commissioners for Dow. I have a couple. Okay, uh, why a thirty foot easement that's why is it from the center of the trail? Where, where does it start and where does it stop? That's a good, pretty wide basement for bike trail.
It's, so it's not actually technically an easement. It's, yeah, so the
Why thirty feet?
The thirty feet is um, I can scan back up to that. So that was the boundary. That was sort of our oops, there we go. That was sort of our self-imposed goal for how far out we wanted the work to potentially go. Yeah, so re- so really what it, what we're capturing there is all the extent of the construction. And and most importantly, in this zone, which is, it's a little difficult to see, but these, these are contours indicating grading that would need to take place. Um, ultimately, the license agreement will just capture the trail width.
Are you gonna vacate the trail on the south side of the road? Or have some sort of a pedestrian crossing um, one to the other for like kids on their bikes going into the school there?
The, and you're speaking about
Where you turn into the school on segment one?
Yeah, right, this location.
I guess.
I don't know if you can see my cursor.
Trail on the south side of the road there.
Yep.
Do you can keep it there or?
So that trail will remain. Um, and you know, mainly because it is a high use for kids who are accessing the school. Um, so coming out of Aspen and and using that scale, that trail, that'll continue to exist. And it will continue to exist in the same way. So where you're, you dropped onto the sidewalk that, that begins right in this location.
I can just imagine, because that's, that's where I get off on, on my bike and get onto the right side of the road. Cause there's a lot of activity. There's some, are there gonna be signs and things for pedestrian activity or?
Are you, are you talking, is uh like a crossing of Maroon Creek Road right here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so we have talked a lot about this. Um, you know. Yeah, the safety, the safety precaution part of it. Um. At this point, we don't have a crossing included in the design. Um, and the reason for that is that we feel like students who are exiting the school at this end of the campus would cross the bridge and get on the trail. Students who are exiting the campus in this direction can cro- can continue to use the existing trail and then cross at the chapel bridge to get over to the, the kiss and ride area or, or get onto the ABC and head towards the business center. This location the more open space is over there. But I, uh, what I'm, what we've, what we ultimately landed on is we can't imagine that there would be a lot of direct connection needed across the road there with these other points that exist. Um, and we had a, we've had a lot of discussion about it. It's not uh, you know, it's not something that we would you know, prohibit from happening in the future, but at this point, it's not a part of the design.
You expect bikers to, you, real, real cyclists, non e-cyclists, that are local people to use the trail? Or continue to use the road?
That's a great question.
Jesse? I personally stand as far away from e-bikers as possible, so that they don't run into me. I don't know if I want to co-mingle with pedestrians, e-bikers.
It's a goo- it's a great question. I, I, one way we've thought about it is, I can imagine that if I'm coming down from the Roone Bells that I might stay, that I, I would stay on the road.
Yeah, you're going like forty five miles.
Yeah, that, you know, um, and then, but I would imagine that if you are coming up towards the bells, what we really thought was important was we wanted to have a capture point that was at the road level. And so we're hoping that this is a capture point for those who feel like they would like to be on the trail. You know, we're, this is not something that we're gonna say, you have to be on the trail. If you're riding a bike, it'll continue, it'll be, you can continue to use the road if you're converted.
I think like intuitively, you're gonna, I think it's gonna feel like you want to stay on the trail. Even if you're like a fast road biker going up the hill, but I mean there's always gonna be the people that prefer the road. But if you're like coming over from Aspen, cross, like it just you don't have to like intentionally like take some sharp turns to like get out to the road, you know? So that's my choosing. One more question. Um, okay, so at the point where you turn into the school on segment one.
Yeah.
Um, and your drawing show like a guardrail. Will there be a guardrail there so that you can and cannot get on the trail if you wanted to get from one side to the other?
They're not in that location.
That'll be like an opening.
I- i- it's, w- we're not going to build anything there informally or formally. But yeah, there, there's, there's not a need that actually, that location is fairly flat. And so there's not a need for a guardrail protection there. Um, interestingly, to your point, one of the things that we're working on is the area, this area around Moore Drive. And so the improve, a, a couple of improvements that we're going for, we're gonna change the pedestrian crossing of the Maroon Creek Road here in this location to make it safer. So right now, it's sort of this informal crossing. And yes, they put a sidewalk across, but the sidewalk or the crosswalk actually ends right in the surface drive. It's a little, it's a little odd. But to your question about railings, what we've decided to do, which is, which would not be required because of a fall zone. We're gonna have a railing along the trail all the way adjacent to the arc to prevent that movement of ki- of kids or adults who are saying, oh, I'm gonna shortcut across Maroon Creek Road here.
Thanks for answering all my questions. Um, are there any comments from the bar Jeffrey go?
So uh, one is just an observation. A couple of years ago, we approved the AMF that was along Castle Creek. It was to get students safely up to the campus. And I guess more of an observation, any lessons? Cause that was multimodal. Out of that experience, because we have students right next to the road. So it'd be interesting to see again, just feedback, because we reviewed it a couple of years ago. They're right next to traffic. And that's with um, there's, there's sort of temporary guardrails that need to be pulled out.
The bollards.
I don't call them bollards, but yeah.
Yep.
Uh, so that's just an observation. Um, and the other one is, thank you to both um Open Space and the city to give an ADA trail. Um, the, the um, so you got the cross slope and the slope. But it doesn't mention that the guardrail is actually ADA compliant. So I would say from my reading of the engineering drawings, they didn't read like they were ADA. They may be, but it was just again, feedback.
Oh, that's great. No.
Um, I am worried about the pinch point and the um, maintenance. I know you probably, well, probably the county maintains the roads and then the city maintains the trail possibly. And as someone who um, snow skis on this, um, you know, it's all the creek tavern helps get there. Um, I'm worried about the, the, the winter maintenance and how one's gonna bury the other. So I'm thinking on a trail, but the Picken County snow guy just covered it, especially at that bridge. So I'm worried about that design element. Um, and the last one that would sound like a location and extent uh conversation is any, I, I think you answered it, which is a, there's no seasonal closures for wildlife. It's based in open guardrail, so the concern should be only there. And most observations are.
Yeah. We, uh, speaking to the wildlife or some of our early designs explored, you know, incursions that went further into the open, more open space, but we're working with Jesse and and her team. You know, we landed on an alignment where, you know, we're, we're in the open space, but really on the edge. And, and which also speaks to your other question about the plow spoils.
Yeah.
And how to manage that. Um, that's why we set up the sort of fifteen foot minimum offset.
Yeah.
Um, really, we like a little bit more. Um, but we, you know, we deal with this sort of across our system. And we feel like fifteen feet is, is at least manageable. If we can get more, it's a little bit better.
Yeah, I, I was thinking of Jeffrey's same comment about the winter maintenance. Um, I just had a question about what the decision making was, decide to plow this and maintain it full time, just because winter demand, like I understand, you know, we have the section of the trail that, that's plowed down below, you know, like right now you can like right now you can Nordic ski from, you, you, I park over by, behind, you know, the Hickory House and you can ski across the bridge and I can connect and a person can ski through more open space. And then go across the bridge and then across the second bridge and then ski the more open space up to the arc if they wanted to. But like well, I have two questions, like how is this gonna affect the, the Nordic ski programming? Because if you provide full time winter access and plowing of that road, then you have to plow that road, the bridge that goes across from the Prince of Peace over to the other side, provide access to the, what do we find, the kiss and go?
Different red.
Kiss and ride. And then so that's, so then all of a sudden, you're not connecting, your Nordic ski trails aren't connecting. Unless you do the thing where you like groom half the bridge and you groom the other half of the bridge, which is what they do over there. That's a wooden bridge with a snow cap. I, I don't see that possible. But then I'm just wondering like mostly winter demand, all the other fully groomed fully plowed trails that we use, like the one that goes down and roll open space that connects, it's all totally flat. The grade coming up there, when you do get like what we have right now, and we had a big winter, you get like some melt and freeze coming down that hill. And the water gets out in it and then you haven't snowed in a couple of days. And I just don't know, especially because and I'm, you guys did a really good job. I'm like, I'm so happy that you didn't get hurt into that open space there. I mean, it's just like a huge meal to your habitat. And every time I go across country, seeing through there, I see deer all the time. And it's just like a really, it's a great area. So it's glad you didn't dip farther into it, but I just don't, especially even the kids that go to the arc. I'm just thinking the trail will stop being groomed past the arc, right? I mean, does it get groomed all the way to Highlands? I mean, not groomed, sorry, uh, wow, I'm mixing up. Did they plow it like all winter long? So if you wanted to bike all the way up Highlands?
Yeah, so Highlands is currently a plowed trail for the city, maintained by the city.
And, and what's that demand look like?
Um, that's a great question. I, I don't have the, I don't, I don't have a number for you. Um, and, and you know, in some ways, use is gonna go way down in the winter. But I think it was important for us to maintain that connection.
Right.
Um, you know, we've probably all had experiences where you're leaving Highlands and school gets out and, you know, the traffic that's generated on that road can be pretty extraordinary. And so really, we wanted to provide a full alternative that, that did allow for that. Um, and, and to your point, to your question about existing Nordic, the existing Nordic connectivity. The intent is not to change any of that. Um, so at the, at the chapel bridge, we would not be plowing half of that.
Right.
We would just leave that as a.
It'd just be the regular access.
E- e- exactly. Um, and so, um, you know, we're, we really worked hard with, to, to not impact that Nordic system that's, that's out there um and, and keep the trail away from that.
I guess my only other question would be that last hill, when you come around. And I guess my only other question would be, that last hill, when you come around the, the football field that you come up, do we have any other fully plowed year-round bike trail that have a grade like that?
Well, this will actually be
Pretty
this will be less than five percent.
Yeah.
And so, um, you know, for example, this hill um over at the Meralt that we currently plow.
Yep.
That's actually steeper than five percent. Um, and you know, there are other locations, you know, Cemetery Lane, for example, um, you know, has a pretty steep grade uh on the elevated section.
Let's say, I run behind the red brick every day, and the city, like, does an awesome job.
That little
Yeah, I mean, it's like in the shade and deep and Cemetery Lane Bridge is pretty good too. It's pretty, pretty well-maintained for winter travel, I've, I've been pretty impressed. So, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I thought the same thing, that's why I asked about the width of the season, is I always see deer in those trees along segment two and one.
I call them the roundabout deer. Same level. Those are the roundabout, and they go over the long course, then they go back over the obvious thing.
And that was the big thing that was important for, for our open space plan and for, yeah. Joe or Jasmine? Questions for our three members? Are there any members of the public that would like to? Or ask questions?
So we have Ernie Frywall.
Yeah, that's me. So I go ahead?
Hi, Ernie, please go ahead.
I probably average riding to the bells about seventy-five times a year, so I really appreciate this effort, this is gonna be great. And I always ride going up through the school campus and down on the road, so this will be a wonderful change. My only question is pretty basic. What happens to the existing uh mountain bike trails that are currently through the more open space and the private property that in the winter time becomes ski trails, do they stay in place?
Yes, those will, those will stay in place, so this, this trail does not impact those trails at all.
Okay, that's great. Okay, that was my only question, and I think what's gonna happen here is, I think as you continue down the road of doing these changes, you're gonna find less and less people taking the bus, and hopefully they can eliminate some of the bus traffic for safety purposes to the right of the bells in the long term, so that would be fantastic. Thank you so much for your efforts, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ernie. And then we have Mr. Fred Lawson.
Fred, uh, an asked a question. Make a comment.
Sorry about that, there's uh no questions for me, I was just trying to uh get the audio sorted in the beginning.
Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you.
Any other public comments or questions?
Oh, yeah.
Right? Um, you wanna discuss amongst ourselves, which means uh, topics? Or we entertain a motion related to the resolution? The doubts compared to? Or any edits to the resolution? Anything procedurally that I'm missing before we ask for a motion on the resolution?
No, you can accept the motion from any of the commissioners, or you can make the motion yourself if you would like.
All right, well then, uh, I will make a motion to approve the Maroon Creek Multi-Use Trail Location and Extent Review um, as presented in the, the resolution um of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Picken County, finding that the Picken County and City of Aspen, Maroon Creek Trail Location Extent Review is in accordance with the twenty-twelve Aspen Area Community Plan. Do I have a second? Okay, so I've got a motion and a second. So let's take a vote, all those in favor of the motion and the resolution, say aye.
All right.
What about Jasmine? Okay, then it's uh unanimous, uh, the resolution passes. Um, and congratulations to the county on this good step forward.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation. Um, well, that's the end of our business to be conducted on the agenda for this meeting. Um, I don't see any meetings scheduled in the future, so I don't know when I'll see you all again.
Little blank spot for you, but I, I promise we'll be back. Yeah, Helen's working on some of those, those master plans to come back, said, um, Castle Creek, um, anyway, so there'll be some master plan things coming. Maybe a growth management application to score. One was submitted in January, but anyway, so we'll. But yeah, you'll have a couple of meetings without, or, or Tuesdays without us.
Free, I'm actually doing it. Um, all right, well then, I think we've handled everything for today, so I'll uh make a motion to adjourn the meeting a fair second. Okay, all those in favor of adjourning? You know, the meeting is adjourned, thank you all for your time and attendance. Nice to deal.